Good senior.
Do we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to our act of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to all the veterans tonight, appreciate your service. One of the ladies in the office, Sandra, had her husband come in and balance this mixer. So hopefully, this has been on since about eight o'clock this morning, and no squeals. So hopefully, we can get through this meeting tonight without blowing anybody's beer drums out. And it was free, I liked that price. Okay, call it over. We have approval of the minutes for work session minutes January sixteenth. We also have council minutes for January twenty-first, and the work session for February thirteenth. I have a motion to approve.
I think I probably, there might need to be a correction, just like on the January twenty-first minute, section F, citizens' concerns, and then item three, meeting structure. It says there was a three to three vote only. I think that should be three to two, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, the lady didn't vote. We have a correction on that.
Section F, under citizens' concerns, item three. It says three to three. Is that all? Oh, okay. I'll make a motion, approve the minutes from the work session and the council meeting with the correction on section F, item three.
All those in favor? Okay, old business, Edmund Nelson. He talked us about the beer and wine. I don't believe he's here, we told him to go ahead and apply. So, as of yesterday, he had not done so yet, but he's probably getting all of his information together to do that. I brought up the subject of the meeting structure, and I went to help of Councilman Venable to put a calendar together, and the nice part was it didn't get any holidays. So, all we're moving is the work session. The council meeting will remain the third Tuesday. So, everyone was given a calendar.
I've got a question on this, we're supposed to be in classes on this day. How are we going to adjust that on the fifth of March?
I think the class is at five, but it might not begin here.
I didn't mean to bring that parade, sorry.
I didn't look at that. It's a local.
It's an absence, isn't it?
Yeah, an absence. So, we should be out at four thirty-five, we should be good. She's not prepared.
Does this run up to the end of the year again?
Yes.
You know it hit any holidays?
No holidays. We try. So, did we have a motion to?
May I have a question?
Go ahead.
Are we talking about keeping the work session at six-thirty and the council meeting at seven? The time, the times are staying the same, just moving to Thursday back one minute.
Unless council wants to make them both seven, that's up to you. I thought we were just gonna keep the time the same, but change the date. Any input on that, from anyone?
Okay, I'm the same. Were you trying to say something?
I would, may I recommend that you read the text into the minutes and then polish them on the left side?
Okay, prior to?
Well, I, as, make a motion, I'd recommend that you read the text into the right. And I'm happy to do that if you would.
Okay.
Council's proposal that the work sessions for the rest of the year be on March, these are all Thursdays, they'll be at six-thirty, March fifth, April ninth, May seventh, June fourth, July nine, August sixth, September three, October eighth, November five, and December third.
That's not the first, well, is the first Thursday that I remember?
A couple over the second. October's gonna be the second, third days. Uh, July and April.
Do we have a motion?
Make the motion to move the work sessions as read in minutes.
My second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion parades three to two. Um, I believe at this time, we have Gary and Council, probably, we're going to talk about buildings and properties.
May I, um, they talked about this a little bit at the work session, and I would like to table my portion of this until after our public, meeting with public, we have public input on permanent.
So, I have a date you want to do?
I would like to move this to our work session. After the public. This is March the third, right?
The public here?
I'm sorry, the public work session is March ninth. So, I'd like to move this to the April work session for my.
So, April ninth, so that until April ninth. Council, you wanna take this?
I do. Before, before I make a motion to vote on this, I want to bring this up. This has been an ongoing situation with this town for a very long time. I'm talking about the house around the corner, right in the middle of Broad Street. We have, we have said, we're gonna move the city hall there, we said we're gonna move the police department, we said this and that, so on and so forth. We've foregone auctions, we've done so many things, and we're not, we have not gotten anywhere where this is concerned. We have waited so long now with the situation with the police department, that everything was crunch time, crunch time, crunch time. And I think that it would do the city good to sell this house, take the funds from that house, put back to wherever we decide to make the police department a permanent home. This is not doing anybody any good at all. We've gotten from, I think I figured out a hundred and twelve with the cost of the house and what we put in it, like a hundred and twelve thousand, I came up with, with another twenty-one thousand in this. So, what I would like to do is, I would like to make a motion to have it properly advertised, get the proper, any appraisals that we might have already had, or I don't believe we have to have inspections, and auction to, auctioneer to auction this house off for sale. So, at this time, I would like to ask anybody, do you have any out here that have any public opinion? I'd like to hear from, from, go ahead, Rudy.
Well, I can tell you one thing for sure, you're gonna need to, if you're gonna auction it off, you're gonna need to put a reserve price on it, otherwise, otherwise you're gonna give the house away.
Right.
So, you know what you, assuming that everybody knows what they have, what you got in it, okay? So, if you know what you got in it, you're gonna, unless you plan on all the break and even, you definitely need to set a reserve price for it.
Yes, sir, I agree with that. Anybody else, I would like to have any public input, please, any council input?
Just the appraisal and inspection that Councilman Jackson had done, still standing, it's, I know, it's six months. If you have an appraisal in six months, is it still gonna work?
That's actually the price that the auctioneer charged, or the appraiser, but it's half of his bill. If we decide to go with him, it'll be another half.
I do have, I do have all that information, and we can go, as long as it's been within the six months, and we can go with everything that we've already had.
I don't think Eddie Jackson was licensed since two thousand ten.
Right, his license had ran out.
Eddie wasn't auctioning at all.
He wasn't, he wasn't auctioning.
Appraising it.
But he was appraising it.
He didn't appraise it, he got someone to do it for us.
Okay, all right.
But, 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 no, this is, this is why we're asking for public input, but, you know, if.
I think we should go outside and get appraisals outside of somebody not connected to the city estate that was never on the city council. I think outside, totally outside appraisers, not somebody that is connected to the city council.
How much, how much was appraisal for? Existing, the existing appraisal, how much was it for?
It was a hundred and thirty-five thousand is what I have, was what I was.
If I heard what you said, you had a hundred and twelve thousand in it, plus an extra twenty-one, so basically, you're at a break-even point as far as, as a sale price.
You're correct, you're correct on that. I was, I know, I said the same thing when I, when I actually started digging in it to this. I was not happy, to say the least, and, and we're gonna have to move our police department somewhere as of right now, but we have got to start thinking about a proper permanent home for our police department. They deserve to have a permanent home, and we do not need to wait until the last minute to do this. So, if we can go ahead and get this sold, and take that money, just sit it in, you know, in a reserve fund for when this time comes, and our police department have a proper home, you know, but, yes, ma'am.
I think what happened the last time with the auction, the way it was handled, it's just a sore spot. It wasn't properly handled. I, I quite frankly spoke about against auctioning it because the method it was taken, you should, it's, it's government fund, you should do your procurement rules and regulations to what you have in your government, and a lot of that means transparency. And I think the citizens didn't feel this transparent. So, that's why I spoke against the auction, to let's set it aside and let's do it correctly for what you're saying right now. And I think a lot of the things will be taken care of, because when someone comes in, they're gonna do today's appraisal, people, the market has gone up around here because people are moving here.
True.
So, the person who you hire will do all of that. You can put your reserve, you can put your reserve higher than the appraisal. It is just, I think it was bad taste of all-around situation, and right now, I think the citizens want to know that it's gonna be a fresh start. You're going to have someone coming here, fresh numbers, fresh people, fresh eyes, and I think that will help a healing process that needs to happen here also. But I do agree that the funding needs to be placed on permanent home of our police department. Because no matter where we go, we're gonna have to spend money. That house is not gonna make you appraise as much as people think, because it's not all done. So, you know, that's part of educating yourself too, is that house is not ready to move into. The city, even if they wanted at the time to move into it, we don't have the fire situation, we don't have the sprinklers, and people, that is all tens of thousands of dollars. So, at this time, it isn't where we think it should be, you gotta know what the guts are. So, I, I believe that the auction is time, and I think the citizens appreciate new eyes, new people working at it too.
That's one of the things that I wanted to make sure, I've been working on this for months, because I want, that, we have talked about this over and over and over about transparency, and I want to make sure that everybody's opinion matters, everybody's opinion counts, it does. But at the same time, you know, it is my opinion to be upfront and honest with everybody about the figures that I've come up with, but at the same time, I want everybody to know that that is wasted space and money for us, it is. And until we start moving on this, it's gonna be sitting there three months from now, six months from now, a year from now, and we're never going to get anywhere with this. So, I'm, with that being said, if there's, yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to point out for those that don't know, the only two ways that that house can be sold is either by auction or sealed bid, and most people think that auction is at least a lot more transparent than sealed bid, given the fact that in the past, the city has taken sealed bids for other property, and did that process completely illegally. And of course, there were other houses that the city has sold in recent years, and sold that property illegally by private sale. So, your opinion that it should be sold by auction is a step in the right direction. And for those who haven't been in the house, the house on the inside, like we said, does not look like it does on the outside, the outside looks great. The inside was done poorly, what is done, and a lot of it's not done at all.
It has no bathroom, it has no kitchen, it's, it's really, yes, sir.
May I pose a scenario?
Sure.
If we remember correctly, the previous owner, before the city purchased the property, I believe had asked to have the property rezoned as a commercial property, to put it, perhaps, I believe it was a tea shop or an antique store in it?
Oh, tea shop.
At that point, the city denied her, this, this was my bone of contention with the city purchasing that property, because they denied her the rezoning, only to subvertly purchase it six months later. So, in order to maximize what you might get out of that property, what the citizens might get out of that property, maybe the city council should reconsider rezoning the property for commercial property to perhaps lure a doctor's office, or a dentist's office, or a property that's going to have minimal impact on the downtown area. It's already adjacent to a government property. It's already directly across the street from a church, which in my opinion is a business. It's diagonally across the street from another church, which in my opinion is a business, and it's diagonally across the street from a tire shop, which is obviously a business. So, logically, from my perspective, the business zone in downtown Stadem should probably end at that house, and the house directly across the street from it, and we'd be done with it. That's where the business district at this point would end. So, I guess in short, that might be something for y'all to consider. That might significantly increase, I would think, the value of that property. It would expand the potential buyers for that piece of property, to either use it for residential or for a commercial business. And that might help solve the issue of trying to find the funds, or at least a significant amount of the funds, to house the police department in the future. Then you can look at perhaps a piece of property on the Atlanta Highway, or wherever the police department might think, you know, working with the police chief, obviously, to find an optimal place to have the police department aside from where it is now, or where they're gonna be relegated, which is back here, I assume. So, again, I guess, is that a possibility?
Well, yeah, I'm glad you brought it up, Thomas. Did, did, did I hear somewhere that somebody says that we can't have businesses on Broad Street, like?
I don't, that's actually two, two eleven, that's not actually Broad Street.
I know, I know, I, I, somewhere, I don't know where, somebody told me that, or is it, is it because it was zoned, that they were gonna zone it government? I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
I seem to recall there was a conversation years ago about turning Broad Street into what some other towns have done, an office residential district, where you had kind of a blend of houses and offices and that type of thing, and it didn't, Miss Betty may recall, I don't, it seemed like there was this conversation, I don't remember if it was just the planning culture or what, but it never went anywhere. And then, and I think that was some of the conversation in the council, that the city denied it, and then just managed to have it.
When she asked for that, so, so as of right now, if somebody bought it and it was zoned commercial, so they could put in a business, and?
If you done it commercial or office or something like that, sure.
Okay, oh, okay.
It's gotta be rezoned, Craig, right now it's government.
No, I think, I think, no, we found out that it was not some government. It's still some presidential.
Is it gonna be sold as is?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
As is?
It's definitely, would have to be sold as is, but like I said, if anybody has, um, Mr. Jeffrey.
I just had this thought in my head, I don't know if this has a factor with any of the historical part of town. What if, since that house has no viable plumbing, no viable electrical panel in it? It's basically a shell of a building, what if, since it's up on foundations, you sold it to be moved, and the city maintained that property for future expansion? And have the building removed?
You won't get, you, if you, if you sell a building outright the way it is, you won't get, you'll get next to nothing for it. I can tell you that, you won't get to.
Right, I, I understand that, but you have to understand that people that buy that park are gonna drop a hundred thousand dollars, and people are not gonna pay a hundred fifty thousand to drop a hundred thousand in that building. Because you get the plumbing done, and any business is gonna have to put in the sprinkling system and all of that, you're look, and there's no heat in that building?
Yeah, you, you would have, you definitely have to, be, have somebody that would, that would take a lot of interest in, in building that house from, you know, my, I have a daughter, a daughter-in-law, stepson that has got an older home, and they have done wonders with it, you know, but that, that's, this is why we need our public input, we cannot sit up here as a council without your input. It's very important that we have it, I mean, in order for us to make decisions based on what is best for this town.
Are you sure, because we ring the lamp clock usually.
Hopefully, we've changed that, so if you do have something to say, we'd like to hear it.
It really, it really comes down to, you put it up for auction, if someone sees a vision, they'll buy it for the price that they want to, it will either sell at auction, or it won't. Right now, it's residential R1, I don't know in your ordinances if you have a visit, business district, even if it's outlined per se, saying that Broad Street is only residential, but right now, that house is residential. So, I mean, it does come down to, if someone really wants it and has a vision, they'll pay the price. If not, it may not go, and we'd have to look at other options.
True.
Broad Street might be considered residential, but there's a house on Broad Street that has a business within that house.
Yeah, they, well, it's like we said.
Harry Martin, Harry Martin, example of it.
We, well, he said it was never put out there that he couldn't do that, so.
Right, Harry Martin's.
But I think that I talked to that lady that, is that, is that, do I, remember somebody telling me that the woman that wanted to open a business, they said she couldn't?
Right, because I was, I was part of that business that was opened it, they were gonna have an antique tea shop.
One thing, if, if you go through the process, and if you decide to turn this commercial, the one advantage you have is the fact that the property belongs to the city. So, you can place under, under, what do you call it? Business development, okay? You can, you can dictate what the building ends up looking like. You can limit its usage, you can limit the amount of parking, okay? You can dictate to whoever purchases that building as to what it can be turned into, and what it must look like. That's part of, you also have the opportunity, if you wanted to, to work in, work in partnership with someone that wants to develop this, where you begin the sale process with them, and within a three-month or five-month period, they have obligations of repayment of what you're in essence loaning them, to help them get this started. You eventually get your money, okay, but it's in a partnership. There's a lot of places that, there's a lot of cities that do that, they'll own a tract of land. They'll give that tract of land to a developer. Once the developer has developed it, okay, that's when the city is paid back for their sake, all right? Now, obviously, we, as a city, we can't afford to do that, we need, we need cash, money, metal.
We, we, to me, Rudy, mine, and this is my opinion on it, I mean, it just needs to go.
Right.
As far as the city's concerned.
And the one thing about it is, you're gonna wanna, if you're gonna turn that into a commercial, you're gonna have to put some kind of limitations on it, because those people that live next door to it, they don't wanna see the heating and air business sitting there with, you know, old air conditioning units sitting outside in the backyard. And that's where, that's where you as a city council, and I believe you can check. And that's where, that's where you, as a city council, and I believe you can check with, check with the lawyer, you have the opportunity to develop that property any way you want, by, through the, through the process of what you do with the person that buys it.
Well, depending upon the type of business, someone will be able to, that house, that could possibly run into the same problem the city would run into, spending a bunch of money on sprinkler systems, and otherwise, but, you know, it could be a positive, maybe it's not a commercial, it could be a negative, maybe it's not a commercial, depending upon what it would be used as. As I said earlier, I think, my personal opinion is that we need to get into appraisal, knowing, knowing the property, find out what's truly the fair market value is on it. I think we have a rough idea of how much money the city has spent on it previously. And I, I just personally think that if we're gonna sell it, then we need to get into appraisal.
How many square feet is it?
And we also need to go through the process of getting an auctioneer, getting an auctioneer off, to see how it's better, but we, we'll have to have the present before we can set a new reserve bid.
So, if, if, if no one has anything else, then I'd like to make a motion to get the proper appraisals on the house, get a proper auction, auctioneer, auction house to sell the house, and if it needs to be put in, I mean, Katie, you know this better than me, it has to be noted in the newspaper for a certain amount of time?
It does, and just one final comment that I would make, about the properties at auction, you don't list the property at auction for fair market value, you will not get very many bidders on it. As with any type of bidding, your bidding could go way above what you want, but generally, things that are listed for auction are listed well below what their actual value is.
Right, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not looking for a sealed bid, I definitely would like to see it go up for auction. So, I'm making a motion to have this process started immediately.